Okay, item 19 is Axon rezoning 13 ZN 2020. And our presenter here is Greg Bloomberg, our senior planner on this project. Mr. Bloomberg, are you available to speak toward this?
I am, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks again, Mayor Lane and council members. Greg Bloomberg, senior planner, here to give you an introductory presentation for case 13 ZN 2020, which is for the Axon corporate headquarters. My presentation will be followed by a presentation from the applicant. Next slide, please. Site is located at the southeast corner. It's approximately 60 acres at the southeast corner of Hayden Road and the 101. This application applies to essentially the east 30 acres of this site. To the southeast of the, or the south of the building location is the perimeter center, which is occupied by several similar uses to what is being proposed on this site, a lot of office and industrial uses. To the southwest is the Scottsdale-Stonbrooke II townhomes, residential community, single family residential community. To the west of the site, there is presently Mark Taylor multifamily project being constructed at the northwest corner of Princess and Hayden. And then, of course, there's Arizona state land beyond that west of the site. Next slide, please. Just a closer view of this location. Again, there's the residential at the southeast corner of Hayden and Mayo Boulevard. Next slide, please. Presently, the site is zoned PCD, which is consistent with the entire crossroads east master plan, which is approximately 1,000 acres. This is a portion or a part of that master plan, and it's presently zoned PCD. Next slide, please. This case would rezone the site, not even rezone it necessarily, but just adopt the I-1 zoning for this location. I-1 was, has always been anticipated at this location, going back to the mid-'80s when this was core south. So the I-1 would be added to this site, and the PC would still be part of the zoning. Next slide, please. The general plan designates the site as employment, which is consistent with the applicant is wishing to do here, which is office and manufacturing. The site is also part of the regional core of the general plan, which indicates or suggests anyway that this site is appropriate for some of the more intense development in the area. Next slide, please. And the Greater Airpark Character Area Plan, it's a bit of a small graphic, but the Greater Airpark Character Area Plan also designates the site as employment. Next slide, please. So, again, the industrial park district is what the applicant is going to be building under if this is approved. There's only one amendment proposed to the I-1 district as it's approved for the crossroads development, and that is to the building height. The applicant seeks to increase the building height from 52 feet to 82 feet, exclusive of rooftop pertinences. There's no other development standards proposed with this application, and no bonus development standards proposed. Next slide, please. And just to memorialize the heights request, there's an exhibit of the height that would be attached to the ordinance. It restricts the 82 feet to the Axon location only. The rest of the site would be built to the standard maximum building height for the I-1, which is 52 feet. So this is being memorialized as part of this application. Next slide, please. So here's a context area with the site plan. You can see the location of the Axon building, close to, very close, as a matter of fact, to the freeway with parking southeast of the building itself. And there's also some street infrastructure and street improvements proposed as part of this development. One of those improvements is to widen Hayden Road north of Mayo Boulevard, which would be done by the applicant. And the Mayo alignment that you see running through the site and then curving down to meet up with the existing Mayo or Union Hills, as it's also been known, is also going to be done by the applicant. And a series of roundabouts would also be included as part of those improvements. And then, if you notice at the southwest corner of the site, there is a four or five-acre site. The actual, exact acreage is yet to be, I think, established, but there is a civic site that the applicant is coordinating with the city on. This civic site could be a future location for a fire station, more than likely will be a future location for a fire station, and a water pump station. But those discussions and negotiations are ongoing, so I just, that's just being shown for context purposes. Next slide, please. Here's a larger view of the site plan. You can see the two roundabouts and the Mayo Boulevard. That's where all the access to the site will occur. Again, there's a lot of surface parking surrounding the building. There is an event space, I think it's actually, I can't read this, some sort of an advanced structure that's part of the building that I'll let the applicant get a little more into detail regarding, but it's a unique feature of this building. That's the area of the building that's sort of orange in color. And then, there's a plaza space before you get to the building entrance, and patio space for employees for breaks and for taking lunch and that sort of thing. And all the delivery and refuse collection, loading and unloading would be located along the northwest corner of the building, away from the street and away from the residential to the southwest. Next slide, please. This is just an open space graphic for you to see. There will be a lot of open space, obviously, that is yet to come as the property is developed, but this is what's being provided with this particular project. Quite a bit of frontage open space along Mayo Boulevard buffers the parking from the street. Next slide, please. This is the circulation plan. The majority of the employees will likely enter off the second roundabout to the east, but they can also enter from the roundabout at 82nd Street. And that's where all the deliveries and unloading and loading and refuse collection will occur is at that, again, as I mentioned, at that northwest corner of the building, away from the street and away from the parking and away from the residential. Next slide, please. Here's a look at the building elevations, a rather iconic design. The only portion of the building that's 82 feet is the office portion. The rest of the building, which is the majority of the building, is, I think, below the actual maximum, standard maximum height of 52 feet. So from a building footprint perspective, the 82 feet does not occupy a large portion of this footprint. It's just that office portion. You can get a good idea of just how much of the floor area or the footprint is 82 feet by that lower graphic that you see. Next slide, please. So just the requests, summary requests and some background. Again, no bonus development standards are requested. This proposal is, would retain and expand a major employer headquarters. Presently, the Axon Corporation occupies a building in the perimeter center that they have outgrown, and this proposal would allow for them to expand their headquarters onto this site. Again, widening of North Hayden Road and extension of East Mayo Boulevard is proposed as part of the project. Again, the future civic site that may include a new fire station. There's some enhanced landscaping proposed along East Mayo Boulevard, on the north side of East Mayo Boulevard, that I'll let the applicant get into. I believe he has a graphic that shows that. And the Planning Commission heard this case and recommended approval with a vote of seven to nothing. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to go through real quick the outreach that has occurred for this project. Back on September 18th of this year, there was, the site was posted with a project under consideration sign advertising the 1013 open house. On 9/23, the property owners within 750 feet of the site were notified via heads-up postcard by city staff. On 10/1, 2020, property owners within 750 feet were notified via postcard, again, by city staff of the 1028 Planning Commission hearing. On October 7th of 2020, a red hearing sign was posted on the site advertising the Planning Commission hearing. On 1013/20, the applicant held a virtual open house, consistent with COVID guidelines, of course. And finally, on October 16th of 2020, the property owners within 750 feet were notified via postcard of tonight's city council hearing. So that's just a brief summary of the outreach that has occurred. Next slide, please. That completes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I will turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
Very good, Mr. Bloomberg, thank you. And after that, we'll hear from some speakers on the subject, citizen speakers.
Mr. Mayor, this is Charles Hummel. Can you hear me?
Yes, can, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We really appreciate all the time that you've taken, and I will try not to repeat the slides. I know you've all taken a lot of time to work with us over the last year or so. We're very excited to be expanding our uses here in Scottsdale. As you know, we're a born and bred company in Scottsdale, and we have seen great growth over the last several years, and we're really proud to be continuing our work here in Scottsdale. I'd like to kind of go through the presentation. I'm going to slip through some of these slides a little more quickly. Greg, as he always does, did a really thorough job, and I don't want to repeat his points. But please move to the next slide. And one more slide, please. So I want to point out that we have an existing location now. It's pretty close to where we are. We're doing much of the same work, maybe more of it, but pretty much the same thing that we're doing now in a grander fashion. And we have the two locations in blue that we exist in today. So we're already here in the neighborhood, and the work that we do is essentially the same. Next slide, please. And one more, please. So you've seen this slide a few minutes ago, but again, we are only asking for approval of this portion of the site. We worked with the state to purchase the entire site, and we hope to continue to grow in Scottsdale. The site before you, though, is a pretty iconic building. It's one we're very excited about. One of the things that you'll see from this particular image, and that I think Greg mentioned as well, is that we've moved the building as far away from the residential as possible. While this whole area is designed for employment, we really thought it would be best for us to move as far away as possible. And it's also worth noting, and you'll see again in a few minutes, we're much further than some of the existing industrial from the existing neighborhood. Next slide, please. In addition to providing the building, we think, in the right location, this exhibit is designed to show you where that height exists. Again, it's only a small portion of the building that you can see in yellow, and it's only the piece above that sort of floor. So you can see in the upper right-hand corner, you can see the places that will be above the existing height. And in the center, you can see that it's a long, sort of thin piece, and that we've oriented that on purpose in a way that would be least easy to see for our neighbors. Next slide, please. And you can see on this site, on this slide, excuse me, how the site has, again, been oriented so that the building itself is really as far away from everyone as possible, right up against the freeway. And our height even is designed in a way that is really, the least amount of visibility is possible. Next slide, please. And one more, please. From this slide, you can see that already there is industrial that's close to the existing neighborhood on the east. Again, much closer than we're proposing. We're proposing to be over 800 feet away from that neighborhood. We did that on purpose. We moved the building as far away as possible. We know we could have had those uses much closer, but we did what we could to try to separate ourselves as much as possible. Next slide, please. One of the things we did hear throughout our outreach, though, was that the neighbors, they had some concerns, and some of those things, I think, are more appropriately addressed by the city, and some of them were more appropriately addressed by us. I think one of the things we heard is that there were concerns about the uses, the sound, the gases that might come off. And I think, while we understand that those concerns might be out there, they don't really apply to us. And you know that in part because we're going to do the same kind of work we do today in a newer building that's built to today's standards. And over the last 15 years or so, we're unaware of any concern that's been raised by anyone in the city towards us. We like to think we're a good neighbor, and on that note, one of the things you saw earlier was the outreach was 750 feet. It's actually not true. We actually doubled that. One of the city staff members suggested we should reach out further, and so we did. But one of the things we did hear that we thought we could address was that we thought, we heard from the neighbors that they would like us to have landscaping along the streets that was more consistent with what they had on their side. Wasn't something we'd originally planned on. It wasn't something that we'd proposed. Obviously, you normally see something different in a more industrial area than you do in a residential area, but it was something we could accomplish, and so we did. And we proposed and still propose. The graphic you see before you, which adds significant landscaping, not only to the piece of land that we are proposing to develop now, but also to the piece that is not being developed now, because we think, again, that helps address some of the concerns raised by the neighbors. Next slide, please. Sometimes a landscape plan is hard to see and read and feel, and so this landscape section, I think, is really more telling. As you look to the left, you can see where the residential area is. Again, the portion that we're developing is not immediately adjacent to the residential, but we're going to plant that piece that's immediately adjacent as well. And we have added trees in the median, as well as another row of trees on what would be the north side of the street, an additional sidewalk for pedestrians, which was a little different than what we'd proposed, but something that was requested and we thought would make good sense, and then an additional row of trees beyond that. So we've substantially increased the landscaping beyond what you would normally see in this type of situation, but we did it in an attempt to be a good neighbor. Next slide, please. I think you've kind of seen this slide already, so the next slide, please. And I think that you've covered the zoning. Greg has covered the zoning for you, so I'll answer questions at this point in time and be happy to go over any of these other areas that you, if you have questions or that the speakers make comment, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation. We're going to go ahead, though, and move. We have a number of people who have requested to speak on this, and then we may come back to you then after that, if there are questions from the council members. So I'll turn it over then to Megan to proceed with those speaking requests.
Thank you, Mayor Lane. This is Megan. We have four spoken public commenters on the line. I will unmute the first, Bill Miller, so bear with me just one moment. Mayor Lane, this is Megan. Just to let Mr. Miller know, he is unmuted on our end. On his end, he will just need to press star six to unmute, so I'll give him just a moment to do that.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Hi, everybody. I'm Bill Miller from 8131 East Michel. I'm also an officer of the HOA board here in Stonbrooke. First of all, we're delighted that Axon is going to be our neighbor. I'm a business person, I know some of the execs over there, and I'm just delighted we're going to be in our neighborhood.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller, excuse me.
Yes?
Mr. Miller, if you can, it's a little garbled, it's a little difficult to understand you. Is there something you might be able to do to improve the quality of your transmission to us?
Yes, sir. Is that a little better?
Much better, yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Again, I'm Bill Miller from 8131 East Michel over here at Stonbrooke II. I'm also on the board. We were quite caught, quite by surprise about the Axon plans. We had heard nothing about it. I am a business person. I know a lot of businesses around Arizona and the western states, and I know some of the Axon execs, and we're delighted from a neighborhood standpoint to have them as neighbors. Couldn't ask for a better neighbor, improving our values and making this whole area very nice. What we are concerned about, though, is a lack of notice. We didn't hear anything about it until perhaps two to four weeks ago, and some of my other board members can speak to that. But we had some concerns about the egress, if you will, the roundabouts and what's going to happen on Hayden Road, as you may or may not know. During the Phoenix Open and major events, we are landlocked, and I mean, it is tough. So we suspect that if it's not done correctly, that it'll be kind of a quagmire for us and for the employees of Axon. We also had some concerns about the landscaping, which I think has been addressed, or at least being talked about. And thirdly, about some of the decorum of the building and that it might not quite fit what we think is kind of befitting of Scottsdale. But I just wanted to make my thoughts known and to ask the city to please consider delaying a final decision until we can have a little more time to study this.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, sir. Bye-bye.
Mayor Lane, this is Megan. The next caller we have is Mary Kay Kennett, and I'm going to go ahead and unmute her now.
Yes, hello, this is Mary Kay Kennett.
Oh, okay, this is Mary Kay Kennett?
Yes, hi. I live at 8149 East Teresa Drive in Stonbrooke. I am an original owner since 1996, and I am just calling with a couple of concerns. I am on the HOA board, and we have been in some communication with Charles and some other individuals with the city. We still have some outstanding questions with regard to this project, and basically, we are asking that the council allow for a little bit more time for us to get those answers and get some resolutions lined up with Axon and with the city for our residents. We've been, yes, put on notice that these meetings have, were going to occur. We've been sent the postcards, we've seen the signs. Those signs were only put up late September. We received a letter October 2nd or 3rd from Axon. We are now only at November 10th, and those few short weeks have not really garnered us a lot of answers. We've got some additional landscaping. However, we still don't have answers to the noise that this new project will create. We've asked if it will be a 24/7 facility. We still don't know that. We have no idea as to the environmental impact. I know Charles had stated that nothing would change from what they're doing now. However, we are in a floodplain. We need to know how this is going to affect our homes. The other issue I personally have is that the construction of this building has a lighting feature on the north part of it that will face the 101. That is a rotating yellow LED light that will basically serve as a billboard for Axon to people driving down the 101. And in light of living in Scottsdale for over 25 years, I just don't feel that it's in keeping with, I know we are ever evolving.
One minute remaining.
As far as the city, but there are just a few things that I just would like to see us maintain as far as the integrity of our town. And that, to me, is a little off-putting. And so with those issues, I would request kindly that the council allow us for a little bit more time to discuss those issues with Axon and the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennett.
And Mayor Lane, the next speaker that I have is Tom Durham. So if you bear with me for a moment, I'm going to go ahead and unmute him on my end.
Very good, thank you.
And Mr. Durham, you're unmuted, so feel free to go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tom Durham. My address is 8892 East Buckskin Trail. I'd like to start by saying that Axon is a great company.
Excuse me, Mr. Durham, Mr. Durham?
Yes?
Tom, is there, you are coming through rather garbled, and it's a little difficult to understand you. Is there something that you might be able to do to refine your transmission to us?
I've turned off the speakerphone. Is this better? I get closer to the not piece?
Is there a chance that you have something on in the background of this meeting that might be providing us some kind of feedback, Garble?
No, I'm in a quiet room. I don't have anything else.
Megan, is there some?
Can you hear now?
Can hear you, but it is difficult to sometimes understand you. Why don't you go ahead and try it again?
Okay, I will. I'm holding it close to the microphone part. I wanted to start off by saying that Axon is a great company. I wanted to say, Mayor Lane, we keep in here.
Tom, I'm sorry, it won't do you, it won't do you justice.
There's some significant concerns regarding the building.
Mr. Durham?
The company has been asked for an increase in height from 52 feet to 82 feet.
Megan?
If I understand it correctly, that's a 57% increase.
Is there some way we can do something about the quality of his transmission to us?
Mayor, this is Brian. I disabled him for a second. He has some connection issues on his end, some interference, sounds like some electronic interference.
So it's not a matter of dialing back in separately, a different connection?
If he wants to, if he wants to dial, we have other speakers. If he wants to dial back in on a different line or a different phone, we can let him back in, and he can do his comment.
Can we advise him to try to do that in some, in some fashion so that we might be able to take his testimony?
Yes, Mayor, he can hear us, and then we also have his number, and we can call him and get in contact with him.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. While we work on that on the back end, while Brian calls Mr. Durham, I will go ahead and unmute our next spoken public commenter is Susan McGary, so bear with me for one moment, Mayor.
Okay, very good, thank you. Megan?
And Ms. McGary, you are unmuted, so feel free to start whenever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan McGary. I live at 874 East Teresa Drive. I'm president of the board here in Scottsdale-Stonbrooke, and, I mean, I don't want to be too repetitive from what my peers have said, Bill and Mary Kay, but we're all very tuned in to this project now. We've attended all the meetings virtually, submitted comments and so forth. Our primary concern is this process has been so quick, we haven't had the opportunities we need for due process to be heard and listened to, and also try to bring resolution to some of these concerns that the neighbors have. We are the only residential community affected by this development. I was really happy to hear during the presentation the number of comments that were made about the residential community. We definitely know we've been noticed now. In the last couple of days, we have made some progress on a couple of issues, but we still do have those outstanding concerns such as noise, environmental, flood impacts, and no one really mentioned this yet, but the two main streets that feed our community are going to be heavily impacted by this development as planned, and we have some major concerns about those impacts, and we've shared those with city staff. We just haven't reached suitable accommodation on those. So at this time, we just would like to have more time to reach, make some conclusions possible for our neighbors to feel more comfortable with this project, and, I mean, we never did want to stop this project. And, I mean, we never did want to stop this project, but we do need more time. We're asking for 60 days to be able to work with staff and come back with some possibly adjusted development plans. We did speak at the Development Review Board, but none of our comments were, they were all noted but not included.
One minute remaining.
Anyway, thank you for this, thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I look forward to hearing what everyone has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGary. Megan, were we able to reconnect with Mr. Durham?
Mayor Lane, we are waiting to him, for him to call in on a separate line. It looks like he's just joined us, so if you give me one moment, I will let him in the meeting.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Durham?
Yes.
Much better.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we certainly can, yes.
Right. I wanted to start by saying that Axon is a great company. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for working to keep them here, but I think this project does raise significant concerns. There's an increase in height from 52 feet to 82 feet, and that's a 57% increase in the height. I believe if the Scottsdale police caught me driving 57% over the speed limit, I think I'd probably be in some trouble, and I don't think I could solve that trouble by saying that I really, really like to drive 57% over the speed limit. So I think that's a significant issue in why we are allowing such a major change in our zoning standards. This building will represent a major change in Scottsdale. This building is unique, to say the yout least, which many people have commented on. It will have very unusual color schemes, lighting that Ms. Kennett, I believe, has commented on, that comes close to a billboard, which we have generally prohibited here. And all of this is going to be located at one of the most conspicuous locations in Scottsdale. And as several of the commenters have noted, there has been a minimal time to comment on these issues, and there's been minimal time for the surrounding neighborhood to give their comments on some of these issues. So I would suggest deferring this matter until there is a greater opportunity for public comment and-
One minute remaining.
-public meetings at the city council meetings to provide greater input to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Megan, does that then, does that complete the public testimony on this item?
Yes, Mayor Lane.
Okay. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the council for any questions they may have. And I'm, of course, looking to have, yeah, have the applicant and our senior planner standing by to answer questions from the council as they may come up. So it looks like first for comments, questions or otherwise, is our Vice Mayor Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to thank the residents and the applicants and staff because I have been working with everybody for quite a few weeks to try to resolve some of the issues. I know we are moving quickly. On the, I just want to mention the noise, environmental impacts, flooding, all of those, this applicant, like any developer, has to meet our city code. And one thing that Randy Grant said in a meeting that I had with the constituents is that the current facility that is, the new facility that's being voted on tonight will be the same operation as the existing facility, although bigger, but if they expand and expand the uses on the remaining acreage that they have purchased, that has to come before council again. So if there's changes in chemicals or something of their processes, that all comes before the city again. I just want to thank the applicant and the residents for asking for this because it really benefits Scottsdale when our roadways are beautiful. And so just today, we got an updated site plan, our landscaping plan, and I just want to point out that he's, that the applicant is proposing good, large desert trees that, and he's, they've added trees in the median, too. I, you know, there's nothing more beautiful than you're driving down a road and you've got the beautiful trees on both sides and in the median, too. So I want to thank the applicant for that and the citizens for asking for it. The street, a lot of the questions that I'm hearing from the residents are really on the city side. Even if this project's approved today, we're still here, we're still with you, we're going to make it right. You know, we've discussed various tactics for discouraging use of 82nd Street, which is your neighborhood road, and staff indicated that they'll be funding and ways to address that. We discussed the amphitheater that primarily, or is expected to just be used for the events at Axon, but if, in fact, a third party wanted to rent that amphitheater, staff did confirm that a special use permit would be required from the city. And lights, you know, we've been able to answer some questions about lighting, but again, that is a city issue and we'll keep working with you. So we're here for you on that. I know there's still a question on roundabout versus four-way stop signs. I don't know if Greg wants to, if that's still open for discussion, and that's the Mayo 82nd Street, it's a intersection, if four-way stop signs are considered or if we've pretty much set on roundabouts, that would be my only remaining question. Oh, you know, actually, I have one question for the applicant. With this new landscaping plan, I would like to amend whatever motion is put forth to include the language. I just want to confirm that this applicant would accept this language, and the language would be "The property owner shall provide enhanced landscaping along the Mayo Boulevard frontage as depicted in the landscape buffer exhibit at Mayo Boulevard dated November 10th, 2020." So that's what we received today. So I guess I would like to hear from the applicant that that would be okay if I included that in the motion.
This is Charles. I don't know if you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we would certainly agree to that as a stipulation. That's something we've committed to doing and have no hesitation to committing to that as a stipulation accordingly. Thank you.
And Mayor Lane, Vice Mayor Whitehead, I apologize for interrupting. This is Megan. I just wanted to make the mayor aware that we have a hand raised on Zoom by Randy Grant.
Okay, very good. We'll take him out of order, and let's go ahead and ask Mr. Grant to speak.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I wanted to just clarify, Vice Mayor Whitehead had said that the future development on the western partial would have to come back to city council. It would come back, it would come to the city, but it would be development review. The zoning, as long as they're meeting the zoning requirements, it would be a development review board review. They would, of course, have to meet the conditions, all the environmental conditions and for hazardous materials that all regulatory bodies would require, but it would not come back for city council review unless they were proposing some amended standards or something out of the ordinary. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Then next, we would have Councilwoman Clapp.
Yeah, I'd like to have Mr. Hugh Mantle explain a little bit further about the height that's on the property. You know, there's a question about is this height appropriate? And I listened to the planning commission presentation, and I thought you did a good job of explaining why the height is where it is and why it's removed as far away as it is, and if you had lower heights there, that you'd have to have more buildings closer to the neighbors. Could you go into that a little bit more for us, please, Mr. Hugh Mantle?
Absolutely, thank you. And it's certainly worth pointing out that we've come here with unanimous verdicts from both the design and the planning boards, so we're proud of that. Is it possible to go back to my exhibits? And next slide, please, probably about five slides in. One more. And actually, one more, I think. So one of the things that we worked to do was provide the building, we think, in the right place and the height in the right place. And you're quite right, one of the things I spent talking about at the hearing was why we did that. So in this picture, you can see that that yellow fin is the only place that we're trying to provide height. We do that because that's where the office is, and we're spending a minute talking about the various things we do. On this site, we will, we will have regular office space, we will have research and design space. We spend a lot of our time and energy developing new products and fine-tuning the products we have. We have all kinds of programming space, and then we have manufacturing and distribution. And so the office space is the five-story portion of this yellow building. We did that first by moving it as close to the freeway as possible, and then second, by putting heights where we thought it made sense and not anywhere else. But more importantly, if we didn't have the height there, what we would end up doing is without adding additional height, and by the way, it's worth noting that this similar height exists not far away, just on the other side of the freeway, and both the other side of Hayden and the other side of the freeway, but we would have shorter, wider buildings. And those buildings would necessarily then be closer to the neighborhood. So by being further away and taller, we think we're less obtrusive than if we had shorter buildings and moved them closer to Mayo Boulevard. Does that answer your question, councilmember?
Yes, it does. So I just wanted to make a few comments about this case in that I chaired DRB on this, and the applicant at that time added all this landscaping that Councilwoman, or Vice Mayor Whitehead, mentioned at that meeting because that was, appeared to be the major concern of the neighborhood that's just to the southwest of this property. So I think that the extensive landscaping that's been added to this, as well as moving the heights away from the neighbors as far as they possibly could, and the unique design of this building makes me feel that this is a fabulous project. And so I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 4474 and resolution number 11950.
Second.
A motion made by Councilwoman Clapp and seconded by Councilwoman Cordy. Would you like to speak toward the second?
Only that I wish to confirm that the enhanced landscaping that Vice Mayor Whitehead spoke of is included in that motion.
Sure.
Very good on that. So we do have motion on table, and it's been seconded, and Mr., or should I say, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Phillips?
One of these buttons. Yes, I'd like to make an amended motion to defer this request from Axon to a later date, so to allow for more public input.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, okay, it was seconded from Councilwoman Littlefield, Councilwoman Littlefield. All right, would you like to speak toward it?
Yes, I would, thank you. I think 60 days, which was requested, is too much. I don't think that the concerns that are still remaining on this project, which should take more than a couple of weeks, so I would not be in favor of running this out to Christmas, but sometime within the next couple of weeks to give the neighbors time to meet and discuss what their, what their true concerns are with this. The two that I heard that I did not hear an answer for, one was any noise that may be resulting from this, this building that would go into the neighborhoods or be a problem for the neighbors, and also the light rotating from the building. How far is that going to shine, and is that going to be a big problem? Is there a way to shield that away from the neighborhoods? So I think that if we could get some, some clarification on some of their issues, maybe have a meeting that, that they actually answer the questions and not just take questions, which is what they did on the open house, which I found a little odd, but have a meeting with the neighbors, even if it's remote Zoom, whatever, where they actually answer the questions and have a dialogue with the neighbors. I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Littlefield. Councilwoman Phillips, did you back on, or is that, it just wasn't removed?
No.
Okay. Councilwoman Clapp?
Yeah, I would like to ask Mr. Hugh Mantle to explain where that light will be shining because, as I recall, it's not shining toward the neighbors at all. Could you explain that, please, Mr. Hugh Mantle?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to do that. The, the light is, in fact, that people are discussing is on the north side of the building, so it doesn't do anything to the, it doesn't shine southward. It faces towards the freeway, and the building itself and the casing for that lighting will be shielding it from going back into the neighborhood. And also, as it relates to noise, I'd like to address that briefly. There isn't anything different that we're doing in the new building that would create noise, other than what we're doing now in the building that's about the same distance. And in the 15 years that we've been there, we've never had a noise complaint. It's also worth noting that this newer building will be built to today's standards, which would even be better for sound attenuation. And we build cameras and we build TASER systems, which are handheld. We don't build engine blocks for cars. The things that we build are very small and accordingly don't generate significant sound. It's also worth noting that while there's been some discussion about the timeframes that we've had our case reviewed, it's worth noting that the timeframes that we've heard the case under are the things that come from the city statute. So we have met the law in this case. We think it's fair, we think it's appropriate, and we would ask that the council vote this evening. Councilmember, did I answer your question sufficiently?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clapp. Vice Mayor Whitehead?
Speaking of the light on the roof, is that, is there a time that it goes off? Can you provide more information about that sign? And we do, I want to say we do have signs on, nationwide, on other buildings, so this is just different, a different sign.
Sure. Happy to, happy to answer it. It's also worth noting that we're here today on the zoning, that we're not here today on design review, but nevertheless, I do want to answer that question. The sign that I think people are talking about is not really a sign. It's a lighted feature, as you might see from the design. The building is reminiscent of a spaceship. It's important for us that it be an iconic building. It's part of how we bring talent from around the world, bring the best computer programming talent here to Scottsdale. And our company has been really founded on futuristic ideas. It's worth noting that when the TASER was first brought into the world, it was sort of hard to have acceptance on. It was a foreign concept, if you will. And today, very few officers around the world are willing to go on the job without having one of our weapons or a similar one. Likewise, when we brought cameras to the world, it was very new to law enforcement. It was an idea that was way ahead of its time. Today, I think you see in the news, officers are really reluctant to go into the field without cameras. Fortunately, the community also sees them as groundbreaking and important to law enforcement. And so I think universally, people see cameras today as something that's a necessary part of law enforcement. But when we established the camera, that wasn't the case. And so having a futuristic building is important to us. And so we've designed what we call the Axon Enterprise. It's designed in part to look like a spaceship. The piece that we're discussing is not visible from anywhere other than the north side, and it's a screen, and that screen is designed not to display advertising content. In fact, it will have no words. It is designed to be art, and that art appears to be generating the power for the spaceship, if you will. Does that address your question, or would you like me to go into greater detail? I'm very proud of the building and happy to talk about it for hours, actually.
No, thank you. That's great. I do have another question, though. Back to Randy Grant. So I guess my point is, and I-
So I guess my point is, and I do understand this is a zoning case for the whole lot, but if, if there were a fundamental change in what Axon was, was making, what they, what manufacturing, and it involved different environmental, you know, requirements, that's, I guess that's the question, is that that would follow whatever guidelines are required, whether they're city, state, federal. And so it's not that Axon can fundamentally change what they're manufacturing without going through proper processes and getting, you know, getting permits as required. Is that correct, Randy?
Yes, Vice Mayor, that is correct. Certainly, we would, we would not do anything that would put people at risk, and they would have to meet all statutory requirements, local, state, and federal, in addition to conforming with the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, and one final comment, which I meant to say last time, is really, I do appreciate what Axon has done, what they have brought to this world and what they have brought to our police department. So I, and I'm proud that they're, Scottsdale-born and raised.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Littlefield, go.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say, my second on this was not because I don't like this project. I do like this project. I like it a lot. It's a child of the 60s. Star Trek was one of my major TV shows, and I, I find this to be kind of a interesting scenario from, from that point of view for Scottsdale. Like, I find it fun and kind of exciting. But I was concerned, when I listened to the open house, that questions were not answered to the neighbors. And I think, from what we've heard tonight, that's still a problem. You know, if this passes tonight, that's fine, but I would like to ask that Axon make the opportunity for another question-answer session with the neighbors to answer their concerns and to talk with them, and, and directly answer the questions that they all seem to have and that, that are not being answered to their satisfaction. So that's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further comments at the time, we do have an alternative motion on the table, and it's been seconded. I don't know whether it was entirely consistent between the timeframe, or one was stipulated on the motion and amended by the second. But just so we know what we're talking about, what, what is the motion as you stated it?
The motion is to move to defer this request for a later date so we can allow for more public input.
A later date? And then the only amendment that I may have heard from the standpoint of the timing was not 60 days, so-
Maybe within the next couple of days, maybe two weeks, if that's, there isn't to, to not be that.
A motion has been made and seconded. It is the alternative motion, so it'll be the first that we vote on. So I think we're then ready to vote on that motion. All those in favor, please indicate a aye. Those opposed, with a nay. Nay. Motion fails five to two, with Councilwoman Phillips and Councilwoman Littlefield in the affirmative. We'll move to the original motion, then, which has been made and seconded. With the stipulated add, but you said, yeah, that we needed to add to it. Okay. We're then ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate a aye. Those opposed, with a nay. Aye. Motion passes five to two, with Councilwoman Phillips and Councilwoman Littlefield opposing. I thank all members and the applicant for their presentation and staff, and for answering the questions as they were posed. Thank you very much, and thank for all the council and their input on this. So that measure has passed, and we are complete on item 19.